Ask Councilman Haynes to please lead us in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you, Councilman. I appreciate that. Let the records reflect that everyone is present and accounted for in the virtual setting. First on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes. They will be from the April 8th and April 13th, regular meetings. I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All right, it has been moved by Councilman Haynes, second by Councilman Bigliotti to approve the minutes of April 8th and April 13th as presented. Is there any discussion changes or anything? All right, all in favor signify with a thumbs up. All right, let the record reflect, everyone is affirmative on that, unanimous. And all opposed for kicks and giggles, we're good. All right, we'll move on to, are there any conflicts of interest among the council on any of the agenda items this evening?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Very good, then we'll move right into, we have one ordinance up for introduction this evening, that is ordinance 052020, discussed Wednesday night. This is regarding noise within city limits. I'll entertain a motion to introduce.
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All right, that was Mayor Pro Tem Foster with the motion, and Councilman Hale with the second. Is there any discussion regarding the noise ordinance for introduction?
I'd like to discuss the possibility of maybe tabling it until we can get some more public input.
Well, when it's, next month, when it's up for adoption at the Wednesday night meeting, well, we can look into having some public input. I mean, the thing about-
That's fine, as long as everybody-
The intention is that we have technology that we can open back up public comment during some of our meetings. I think over the last several years, for those of us who have been around for quite some time, we've received a lot of public comment about noise in the city.
Yeah.
And that's kind of what's driven it to this point. Any, any changes that anyone wants to see between now and the workshop next month, let me know, we can kind of work out how we want to do that. But other than that, yeah, I'd like to, at the next meeting, be able to entertain some public comment, uh, with any items, agenda or not.
I bring it up now just because it, it is possible that we won't see things go back to normal for June's meeting. And so in that circumstance, would we be willing to table it then?
Well, I mean, it's safe to say we won't be back to normal for the foreseeable future. But with the ability of the teleconference that we unveiled Wednesday night, we can leave that open. I do encourage you, you know, go out on social media, ask your constituents if they have comments, even post a copy of the ordinance on there so people can see it. Anything we can do to get the message out there and get that input between now and then would be great. But again, you know, we, of course, want all the public comment we can get on these things.
Okay, that's fair.
All right, any other comments or questions? Councilman Bigliotti, what do you have?
I just wanted to briefly share on that note, two very quick things. I did hear from some members of the public over the end of the week and the weekend. And we do indeed, we do indeed have a number of bus drivers who are in town, who do run their buses before 7:00 AM to warm them up to go pick up kids. So that's something worth thinking about as we head into next month. And then, uh, former Councilman Rick Hess was in touch with me over the weekend. And he wanted to point out to, to me, and this is to Councilman Haynes's point from last week, that I think we should consider having some kind of objective way to quantify sound in terms of like a decibel level or something. And the reason why is because as Councilman Hess had explained to me, a number of laws that he's aware of have been struck down that didn't have a decibel level associated with them. So something certainly worth thinking about.
Well, and I spoke to Chief about that again, and he and I have gone back and forth. It's not as easy as getting a bunch of decibel meters and having them in all the police cars. You know, in the same way that a radar gun on a police car, you know, when it measures their speed, it tells them at what distance, it tells them all those stats that they need for court. When you're using a decibel meter, they need to know exactly what distance they are away. So they need a way to measure that distance from the sound to where they are. They need all of these things. You know, plus you're looking at not standard decibel meters, it needs to be calibrated, it needs to be certified, there needs to be training on it for everybody. And it's something that Chief doesn't think is really necessary. He thinks the way it's written now, he would prefer, instead of having all this extra equipment and training for the officers. So we talked about that at length on Friday for quite a bit, but we can continue that conversation before next month. Is there any input from Mr. Gull or Mr. Weeprich about that?
I mean, we talked about the reasonable and a standard, and that's a valid standard. If you're talking about doing things in the gray area, it's because a problem, I mean, what is, but if it's really loud and we've had really loud things, you're going to be able to say, well, this violates that. So that's what the courts are supposed to determine is whether the officer was acting reasonable.
Councilman Hale, what do you have for us?
Well, Mr. Mayor, so some of the vehicle things, they're, they're already laws. In many cases, I think we should clean up, get some of that out there perhaps, because those laws do exist. As far as the decibel meters, I'm, I'm not a fan of that. I think it's, it's just more expensive, it's, you know, I mean, when I went through the police academy all those many years ago, um, you, as a police officer, you can't disturb my peace. But you can, your neighbors. So when, when, you know, like a lot of stuff, it's complaint driven. So if someone's going to call in, you know, because somebody's, you know, blasting their stereo or having a party is after the hours that we have set forth. You know, is, this is a nicer way to allow, not a court scenario for the person, if, if in fact, you know, they're cited through the Maryland statutes, right Jay?
That's right, that's exactly right. And normally, you know, you don't take the decibel meters to the parties and things like that. They are usually used for the traffic enforcement. So, you know, this is right up the line of what we're talking about here. You know, this is going to be complaint driven, where a neighbor saying, my, my neighbor's having a party and it's too loud. You know, if the police officer shows up, he's like, yeah, it's too loud. And, and the hours are the key here to determine reasonableness. I mean, that's something that was said before, but you know, during the day, it's a different reasonable this than two, than two in the morning.
Right. Any additional comments from the council? All right, all in favor of introducing ordinance 052020 noise signify with a thumbs up. And those opposed, thumbs down. All right, let the records reflect that it was unanimous, all thumbs up. So that will come before you again next month. If you have any amendments you'd like to see in the meantime, let me know, and we can discuss. And of course, we'll discuss further at the workshop. Up for adoption, after the public hearing we had Wednesday night, we have ordinance 012020, that's the fiscal year 2020, 2021 operating budget. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Mayor Pro Tem Foster was the motion, Councilman Bigliotti was the second, I will open it up for discussion. Councilman Bigliotti.
Mr. Mayor, fellow council members that I'd mentioned, Wednesday night, I would like to offer an amendment for an additional police officer to come out of reserves at the amount of $37,075. And, and I guess I would like to make that in the form of a motion to amend the budget.
All right, we have a motion to amend the budget to add an additional police officer. And Councilman, can you repeat that figure again? You said 37,000?
Thirty seven thousand seventy five dollars.
Okay, and is that, that seems far less than you'd originally, or what has been estimated for that?
That was the, that was the number that was provided to me by the police department.
Okay. Do I have a second on the motion to amend? All right, hearing none, the motion fails for lack of a second. Thank you, Councilman, anyway.
No worries, no worries.
Is there any further discussion on the operating budget that is pending? All right, hearing none, I believe we're all satisfied. Mr. Weeprich, you have anything to add before we bring it to a vote?
I do not, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. With that being said, all in favor of approving the fiscal year 2020, 2021 operating budget through ordinance 012020, signify with your thumb up. And those opposed? Very good, it was unanimous, let the records reflect. Moving on to ordinance 02 of 2020, we have the fiscal year 2020, 2021 tax rate. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second, please. All right, we're going to do motion went to Councilwoman Fuller, second went to Councilman Hale. And is there any discussion on the tax rate, which as a reminder for those viewing from the comforts of their home, it is remaining the same as it has for many a years now. All right, hearing no discussion, we'll bring it to a vote, all in favor signify with your thumb up. And all opposed, thumbs down. All right, let the records reflect, it was unanimous, all approve. We're going to move into ordinance 032020, this is the fiscal year 2020, 2021 water sewer rate. Again, that is remaining the same. I will seek a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
All right, we're going to do Councilman Hale with the motion, and Mayor Pro Tem Foster with the second. I will look for any discussion on the water sewer rate. All right, all in favor of approving ordinance 032020, the fiscal year 2020, 2021 water sewer rate, signify with a thumb up. And those opposed, thumbs down. Very good, let the records reflect, it was unanimous, all in approval. Finally, for adoption, we have resolution 2020 dash zero six, this is the water allocation for May of 2020. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. I'll second.
Very good, that will be Councilman Bigliotti with the motion, Councilwoman Fuller with the second. Is there any discussion on the water allocation? All right, all in favor of approving resolution 2020 dash zero six, the water allocation for May of 2020, signify with your thumb up. Those opposed? All right, let the records reflect, it was unanimous, all in approval. We're going to move into our city manager report. Mr. Weeprich, do you have anything to add from Wednesday night for us?
Just a quick follow-up regarding the blasting inquiry, we are expecting at least another full week of blasting as they excavate for the Roberts Mill Run retrofit pond. And, uh, on the city office project, I want to let everybody know that construction, or well, I suppose technically demolition began today. So equal construction is on site and work has begun. So, that's it, unless anyone has other questions.
Well, I will say it's worked out pretty well, because now all the furniture from the conference room are in the council chambers. So since we're not meeting in the chambers, they could fill it up with all this stuff. Small victories. Any questions from Mr. Weeprich while we're on city manager report?
Jim, does the renovation move anybody out of the office that's there presently?
No, we're able to, uh, we were able to schedule things with the contractor so that those of us in the office can remain. Work is proceeding on what was the upstairs conference room initially, to convert that back into two offices. When those are done, Liz and Barry from our, our finance department will be moving upstairs. And that leaves the large building portion of the ground floor completely vacant, so they can be in there without disturbing anyone. So it, it worked out well.
Good.
Very good. Are there any questions on the departmental reports this evening? All right, we'll move into our legal report. Mr. Gull, do you have anything to add for us this evening?
Yes, I'd like to update everybody on the status of the Tawny Town Crossing letter that went to MDE. You know, we talked about that the last month, that the mayor sent a letter to MDE basically requesting that they allow the approval of the Tawny Town Crossing development, even though there are minor issues with the water and sewer master plan. And the letter went on to explain the reasons why. First, the issues with the water and sewer master plan are somewhat miniscule. Point eight of an acre is not colored right on the map on one of them. There's another four acre piece that wasn't included, but the places around it were included. So generally, lots of kind of errors types of things. Normally, a property has to be in compliance with that before it can move forward. So basically, what the letter asked is let us, let them move forward, and then we'll fix the water and sewer master plan. The problem, yeah, from the planning side is that they believe that we would not have capacity, meaning this 36 or odd house unit would be too much for the city. Because based on the water and sewer master plan, it shows it like that. However, in reality, we have about 200,000 gallons of excess water that isn't available, is available for use. And this is going to take up about 4,500 gallons of 2,000, 200,000 gallons. So you can see it's not a reality. So the letter went out and, um, the secretaries got together and we had a conference call, probably had 20 people on it, from Department of Planning to MDE, the county, the health department, and our city team with the acting city manager, the city engineer, myself, and the mayor. The bottom line of all this wordiness is that we seem to have reached a solution, that they're going to allow what we want to happen. Of course, they're concerned, they just don't want to say, okay, do it. We're going to have to write a letter kind of laying out the facts, and the deal is going to be something like this. They're going to allow this to happen, and we have to promise that we will have our water and sewer master plan amendment, getting it fixed, within a period of time. We internally believe that time will be 90 days from the time the emergency is lifted. Because obviously, the emergency keeps it really difficult to do work like this. So 90 days from the time the emergency is lifted, we would have to have our amendment to MDE, and we believe we can do that. And within that 90-day period, we have to agree that we will not issue building permits for any project that does not already have preliminary approval. So that doesn't mean, that means building permits will still flow for the people watching in the audience, for Meads Crossing, for Meadow Brook, for Copperfield, for all the ones that you know names for, that's not going to be affected. What that means with this, in the next 90 days, no one is going to be able to go and get final approval. As we all know, the planning commission is not even meeting, so it's going to be difficult to get final approval anyway. And nobody moves through the system that quick. So it's a win-win the whole way around. What that means now is we've crossed that hurdle with Tawny Town Crossing. We have six weeks now to get them across the finish line with everything else they need to have, or else the development is not going to happen. So today was a success. If you have any concerns about the deal I just laid out, now's the time to express it.
Jay, is that 90 days from today, May 11?
No, it would be 90 days from when the governor lists the emergency, state of emergency. So not just the stay-at-home order, but the Maryland state of emergency. It would be 90 days from then.
And a lot of it is because of the work they have to do with the county, and a lot of them are not in the county office building and not really reachable. You know, they need somewhere they can more cohesively work together, and in the current situation, that can't happen.
So to your question, Mayor Pro Tem, we asked the question, because, you know, Mr. Weeprich is going to do the bulk of this. If he had to start tomorrow and the situation were normal, where he could work with the county under a normal basis, he's confident he could get it done in 90 days. But since he can't work with the county under a normal basis until the state of emergency is up, that's why we have the extra time.
Okay.
Any additional questions on that from the council? All right, as Mr. Gull said, that, that really was a victory today. We're very pleased that, uh, the outcome went in the way that we were asking for. And, and kudos to Mr. Gull, Ms. Weeprich, and Brian Lubinow from CDM Smith for all the hard work they put into that. Mr. Gull, do you have anything else for us this evening?
No, I'd like to talk later under new business. When you do the deed transfer, I'll talk then. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Gull outside of what he already discussed? All right, hearing none, we're going to move into our new business. This will be the monthly financial report up for approval, and I will seek a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
Very good, that is Mayor Pro Tem Foster with the motion, Councilman Bigliotti with the second this evening. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns with the monthly financial report? All right, hearing none, all in favor signify with your thumb. Very good, thank you. And those opposed, let the records reflect, it was unanimous of approval. We'll move into the accounts payable. May I have a motion to approve the accounts payables?
So moved.
And a second. Very good, we have Councilman Hale with the motion, Councilwoman Fuller with the second. Are there any discussion on that? All right, all in favor signify with your thumb. And those opposed likewise. Very good, let the records reflect, it was unanimous in approval. Moving into item three under new business, we have a release of the letter of credit for Meadow Brook, section 4A. This was discussed Wednesday night. We'll begin with a motion of approval.
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
All right, we have the motion by Mayor Pro Tem Foster, second by Councilman Bigliotti. Anything additional from staff or city attorney on this?
Nothing here, you already heard it.
Perfect. Any questions or comments from the council on this? Very good, all in favor may signify with a thumb up. Thank you. And those opposed, let the records reflect, it was unanimous. Item number four, an item brought to your attention Wednesday evening by Mr. Weeprich, this is the essential employee leave policy. We don't have anything right now for a motion, so we can discuss and come up with a motion, or we can kind of move forward from there. Does anyone have an appetite one way or the other? Give Mr. Weeprich a chance to comment on this before we get much further.
Sure, all I'm looking for is a direction, whether to pursue developing such a policy or some kind of, uh, be it a leave policy or some kind of bonus or anything like that. If there's no interest, then we won't pursue anything. If, uh, you would like to move forward with something, we will come back with a proposal next month.
All right, is anyone on council moved to make a motion in any way? Councilman Bigliotti, what would you like to do?
I, I know we discussed on Wednesday evening, having more information brought to us before we made a decision, like an actual comparison or something. And I would certainly be in favor of seeing more information to, to, you know, how other municipalities are handling it, or what options that we have in our own purview to proceed.
Okay, we'll get that together.
Thank you very much.
Any additional comments from the council? Councilwoman Fuller, what do you have?
I'd say if Jim doesn't mind throwing in some cost comparisons.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good, anyone else? All right, may I, I think for the sake of keeping things clean, I would like a motion to table until next month. And do I have a second?
Second.
Very good, I have Councilman Hale with the motion, Councilman Haynes with the second. This is to table the essential employee leave policy until next month. Any discussion on that action? All in favor signify with a thumb up. All right, and those opposed, let the records reflect, it's unanimous, we have tabled it until next month. Mr. Weeprich will bring some information for us at that time. Under new business number five, we have approval of transfer of Tawny Town Crossing roadbeds, Westview Drive. Mr. Gull, do you want to start with, start us with it?
I would like to. I'd like to go into just a little bit of detail so that it's clear to you all what we're doing and the vote you're going to take. I wish I could hold up a diagram or do the fancy things that we were taught, but I'm just going to try to explain it with words and hope it works. So we're going to start with Westview Drive, as you know it, where intersects Harney Road up to the bend of the road. That current, where the roadbed is, is not owned by the city. The city found that it did not have the deeds to that. And we found that out when Tawny Town Crossing, where the buildings are going to happen that straddle the street, did their title search, they found that part of Tawny Town Crossing, so go north on Harney Road, almost to the driveway, from there, draw an imaginary line that parallels Westview Drive until it intersects Westview Drive at the, um, the curve. That is actually where the city owns the land. So Westview Drive should have been there, but for reasons in the past, it is where it is now. There's no problem with the city continuing to use Westview Drive, just as it is, but it would be nice to have it in fee simple, be, be the owner of it. So what the developer would like to do, since they need the right-of-way where we actually own, they need that part of the thing. They would like to swap what we own for what they're, they own as part of their development, which is the roadbed of Westview Drive. So that's pretty much straightforward of how it deals with us and the developer. But if you imagine that, that line that goes to the rear of the houses on Westview Drive, that, that road that we own, that we never built on. If you look at the two houses on Westview Drive and you look at their plat, their plat will show it owns half of our road, which we really own. You say, how can that be? Well, we really own the road. At some point in time, a plat was done that showed them owning half of it, so imagine one travel lane, and it just passes on and on and on. So if you went to their records, they would think they already own that piece. They in fact do not. So part of this deal would be the developer would transfer and pay the cost of transferring that one half that would have been a travel lane to each of those property owners. So they will end up owning what they always thought they owned. So now that'll be good. The other half, wow, my screen just changed like it's being described, as, as it goes. The other half of the travel lane, so that would be the north part of the lane where they, we would have built the road, that is on the farm that is to the north. And the plan is to give them that part of the right-of-way because they think they own that. So if you can imagine, that's what this is all going to do, is it's going to make everything the way everybody thought it would be at the end of the day, with the developer paying the, paying the costs. How we're going to do that is one of the important things I wanted to talk about. You're going to vote tonight to, to, to do this plan. A deed will be presented to the city, which we will sign or have signed, and then submit it to their title company to hold. Because they don't own all the parcels in one big piece right now, they won't own those parcels until they transfer them to themselves. When that happens, our deed will get recorded and all the transfers will happen at once. If this project should not move ahead, then the deed would come back to us, and it would just be as if nothing ever happened. So that's the plan. Any questions about the plan?
Anyone have any questions on that?
So the, the motion would be to send the, the deed from the city would be submitted to the title company to hold pending the transfers, is that?
I guess you probably could simplify it by saying that the city is going to execute the deed, to agree to execute the deed. That's really all we have to do. It'll happen, or it won't happen after that motion, after that moment.
I will make a motion that the city will execute the deed.
Agreed to execute the deed, is that correct? Agrees to?
Right.
Okay.
Make a motion, the city agrees to execute the deed.
Very good. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Very good, we have a motion from Councilman Bigliotti and a second from Councilwoman Fuller. Is there any discussion from council on that? Very good, hearing none, all in favor signify- Very good. Hearing none, all in favor signify with your thumb up. Councilman Bigliotti, was that a thumb up on that? Oh, very good. And all opposed? Very good. It was unanimous, all in favor. Uh, moving right along, the sewer flow monitoring. This was brought to your attention Wednesday evening. Um, I believe from Mr. Weprick, so I'll ask him if he has anything to add to that for us.
Uh, C D M Smith was able to reach back out to the vendor um and verify the price would indeed be thirty two thousand five sixty. And we would like to have the mayor authorized to um to sign that agreement. And this is uh something of an urgent situation because we do want to be able to demonstrate to the state that we are uh working diligently on resolving our uh wastewater treatment issues and our sewer flow issues. So we really want to get moving on this one.
Very good. May I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
And a second, please. All right, we're going to do the motion to Mayor Protem Foster, second from Councilman Hale. Is there any questions or concerns regarding that motion?
Do we have to include the amounts in the motion?
Yeah, I guess we should, which is.
Mr. Weprick, can you clarify the amount one more time?
Two thousand five hundred sixty.
Thirty two thousand five hundred and sixty. Uh, Mayor Protem Foster, the original motion maker for that, do you agree with including that in your motion?
Yes.
And Councilman Hale, do you still second?
I do.
Very good. Uh, any questions on that now? All right, hearing none, all in favor signify with thumb up. All right, thank you. And those opposed, I let the records reflect it was unanimous, all in favor. We're going to move into council member reports. I'm going to begin this evening with Councilwoman Fuller. What do you have for us this evening, ma'am?
Sorry, I'm not used to going first. Uh, since the planning commission hasn't really met, I guess I have nothing.
Very good. That's probably going to change in the near future, just so you know. Don't get too comfortable. Uh, Councilman Bigliotti, what do you have for us this evening?
I have the police departmental report for both March and April two thousand and twenty. Uh, they're combined this month, or they're combined for the report for this month, including the last two months. Uh, so for March and April, the total number of dispatched or generated calls for service numbered one thousand seven. The total number of citations issued at the state, city and repair order level were thirty four. The total number of warnings issued were thirty. The total number of adult arrests were seventeen, and the total number of juvenile arrests were two. In terms of good news, our three police recruits have adjusted well to remote instruction for academy training online and will soon complete that portion of it. They'll need to complete several practical objectives after they're done with the online portion, but are currently scheduled to graduate in late July. Today is the first day of National Police Week when we honor, remember, and mourn those law enforcement officers, local, state, and federal who have been disabled or have given their lives in the line of duty. The formal day of recognition will be Friday, May fifteenth. And a special note from the department, uh, they have responded well to the current circumstances. Uh, and have generally not had any issues in regards to the existing restrictions regarding the COVID nineteen pandemic. All departmental staff are currently healthy and will continue to work towards remaining that way. The department also wants to personally thank the citizens of Tony Town for their cooperation and patience during these trying times. And that is it for me for this evening.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Mayor Protem Foster, what do you have for us this evening, ma'am?
Yes, on the economic development front, we um have a mixed bag with with the businesses. Um, some have received money and they're grateful for it. Some are still trying to get money. And they're not too happy. And we um have some people that are moving ahead with uh development and applying for facade grants and that sort of thing. So um, like I said, it's a mixed bag. Uh, just an F Y I for the council. I receive these um little hits from the Federal Trade Commission practically um two or three times a week. And when I find items that I think would be of interest to the citizens of Tony Town, I pass them on to um Dan, our I T person, to put them on our website under news and announcements, the latest of which is um people who owe student loans, what they can do and what they can get and the uh and forgiveness and that sort of thing. So um, as I said to Dan, I don't inundate him with stuff, just things that I think would be of interest to our citizens. And that's it.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilman Hale, what do you have for us this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Uh, not a whole lot. Um, just a reminder that the uh the pond is able to be, you know, that park's able to be used. Um, you know, keeping social, safe distancing. Um, there's a little bit of a flair on um one of the social media things over the weekend. You know, what I can say is that our staff is very attuned to the needs of the citizens of Tony Town. And if anyone has a question or concern um about, say, Parks Recs, visit our website, uh email the, I'm Parks Rec Director. You can always email me uh from the city of email address. Um, if you really want to know what's going on and you and you want to make a uh make a situation better, go to the source. And um, that's all for me, sir.
All right, thank you very much for that. And Councilman Haines, do you have anything for us this evening?
Uh, this month I have nothing to report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Um, I'm going to report a little bit. We'll start with kind of a an addition to Councilman Bigliotti's report regarding the police department. Um, as everyone probably recalls, uh, city of Tiantan, particularly the police, got a good amount of national attention. You know, it turns out is a uh begins as a funny post and some people take too seriously. Other people see the humor and and like to uh put a spotlight on it, which we appreciate. Um, people got to see the lighter side of our department. Uh, as a part of that, uh, we decided as a way to help the businesses in the city because of the COVID nineteen, all those restrictions, uh, setting up the Tony Town Small Business Relief Fund and the police department are selling apparel, swag, whatever you want to call it, everything from sweatpants to boxer shorts, t-shirts. Uh, you name it. So if you need to go out and check your mail and you don't want to wear pants, at least do it in style in some Tony Town Police Department boxer shorts. Um, so please go online, check that out, get some swag that you can, you know, show off, show your support, not only for the police department or for the city, but especially for the businesses in the city. Um, they need a lot of help and we want to do anything we can, you know, getting creative to find additional source of revenue, because right now there's not a lot of money out there. And we need to find it where we can to help these people out. We want these businesses to not only survive, but to thrive. Uh, so everyone out there, keep an eye on that. Order your t-shirt, your boxer shorts, whatever it is, and uh and help these out. On that note, I have asked Mayor Protem Foster, Councilman Bigliotti, and Nancy McCormick to kind of head up the planning of that fund. Um, the Chamber of Commerce has reached out and offered to uh help fundraise additionally and also to talk to businesses. I believe the Lions Club have expressed an interest in helping as well. Uh, so I've kind of put them on that. And I appreciate them being willing to uh to do that for me. Uh, obviously, everyone heard the M M L Summer Conference has not really been canceled, but has been moved to the virtual setting. Uh, if you do intend to attend it in the same fashion that you're attending this meeting here, uh, please let Clara know. That way she can get assigned up for it. Um, it's been a busy last couple of weeks, just with different phone conferences, meetings, all sorts of things going on to keep abridged to what the county's doing, the state is doing. Um, I meet weekly with the other mayors over video conference, which is a great thing. We hadn't been doing that and now we're kind of on that. And we all seem to like being able to catch up each week and talk about what all of our municipalities are doing. Um, you know, I hear residents all over the place, you know, those are saying, I'm tired of this, we need to move on, open everything back up. And and it's going to happen at some point. And then there's others who, you know, they kind of understand the danger in the spread. Um, at the at the same time, we can't rush it, but I know we really want to get things to start to reopen. I think that's important if we can move towards that. I'd love to be able to say, you know, get all these small businesses back open again and uh just practice the same protocols that all the big businesses are. You know, some of us get a little tired of seeing the big box stores being able to monopolize this business. Um, give it some time. Uh, I know the mayors in the county were trying to push with the state, uh, working with the delegation, our senator and delegates to kind of put something together, asking, you know, can we start something here, show some progress? Um, they say flatten the curve. I think the curve has been pretty well flattened. The hospitals aren't struggling right now. I think we could probably look at start opening up. That's my opinion. I I don't want editorialized too much. Uh, but I think it's important that we get back to some sort of normalcy as as quickly as we can. Um, that's really what I have for uh for my report this evening. Uh, it's, I appreciate everyone kind of hanging in there with the virtual meetings here. Uh, the way it looks, we're going to be doing this again next month. Um, and that's the way life is right now. In the meantime, bless you, Councilman Haines. Uh, in the meantime, everyone, especially if you're watching, while questions have concerns, please reach out to the council people that you see on your screen or to myself. Uh, call the city office. Just because we can't visit you personally doesn't mean we're not here and doesn't mean that we're not working hard. Um, we're all still trying to do as much as we possibly can with these new restrictions. Uh, but with that, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second, please. All right, it's Mayor Protem Foster with the motion, Councilwoman Fuller with the second. All in favor signify with your thumb. And those opposed, it is unanimous, we are adjourned.